We're going to call our meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the United States of America. And to your honor, your majesty, and your majesty. And to your honor, your majesty.
And on and on.
All right, um, the, I didn't have an opportunity to review the first, the October fifteenth executive session, so the first one I'm going to ask for approval is October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen work session on beach operations. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Next is October, the approval of the October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen work session regarding the bike path.
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Approval of the October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen regular meeting minutes?
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. And finally, the October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen executive session meeting minutes?
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. So I apologize to everybody for our late start. We had a work session prior to the meeting. And, um, lesson learned is we should do those on off nights because we sometimes try to do them beforehand. We always run into this problem. So our first order of business is we have, um, uh, a proclamation declaring Narragansett a Purple Heart town. So, um, I'm going to go down to the proclamation and, um, ask Joseph Tiger Patrick, who's the commander of VFW Post nine-one-six, Ron Gilchrist, who's our veteran service officer, Dale Cordley, adjutant, and then the past post commander, Steve Stewart. Uh, so I'm going to come down and, um, and read the proclamation and have them join me. A proclamation declaring Narragansett a Purple Heart town. Whereas the town of Narragansett, Washington County, Rhode Island, has always supported its military veteran population. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military declaration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in seventeen eighty-two. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service awarded decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill allowing to combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure that we never forget. And whereas the state of Rhode Island has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients. And whereas Narragansett appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they've earned. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of, that the town council of the town of Narragansett hereby proclaims the town of Narragansett as a Purple Heart town. And now, um... And now I'd like to introduce, um, Joseph Tiger Patrick, who's the commander of the post. He would like to address everyone here.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you so much, this is amazing. Narragansett is the fourth city in the state of Rhode Island to declare themselves a Purple Heart town. Our ultimate dream is to have Route four from Westerly all the way to Magny-Vie, be Purple Heart Highway. And so you guys are the next brick, and thank you so much. I'm going to turn this over to Ron Gilchrist, who has a presentation, a Narragansett member and a regular visitor to these meetings. He's an awesome guy, he can pay my bill.
Thank you very much, Tiger, Commander. And, um, I would also like to thank members of the council and the general public in Narragansett. Narragansett has always been a tremendous community, very, very supportive to veterans' issues. And especially on this issue, uh, the Purple Heart. As was said in the proclamation, which probably stole ninety-seven, my presentation here, um, the Purple Heart is, uh, dates back to George Washington, um, and, uh, it really is so important. We, we here tonight are, are, are veterans of foreign wars. Um, so we know, we know firsthand, uh, the importance and what it means for those folks who have been awarded a Purple Heart. In many, many cases, um, no, no, no one really joins the military and says, Dan, I'm going to go, I want to join the military and I'm going to get me a Purple Heart. No, nobody does that. Um, it happened, it happens because...
You got it, your alarm's set for tomorrow. Three years to go.
They have put them, so those individuals have put themselves in, in, in harm's way, um, extremely, extreme harm, harm's way. And they have been, they have bled, um, and died for this country, for our community, for our values, and for everyone here, us included. And in many cases, have literally bled and died, saving the brother and sister soldiers and airmen and sailors. So I am very, very proud of it. People don't, just, if I could, just for a second, just the sheer numbers alone, it just, it, it, it just caught me by surprise. I mean, just, if you, if you think that in World War Two, there were nearly a million soldiers awarded Purple Heart. Three hundred and fifty thousand in, in Vietnam, a hundred and eighteen thousand in, in Korea. And that doesn't count, obviously, it doesn't count, there's a storm, doesn't count, uh, those that have been injured and killed in North Africa. And, and, and certainly, it does not, does not count the fifty-eight thousand, fifty-eight thousand, uh, people who have been wounded or killed since nine-one-one. It's, it's just, the numbers are staggering to me. So anything that we can do to make someone who has a Purple Heart feel more comfortable, for them to see a sign when they're entering the town, they know that this place, this town, this community welcomes them and that there are services available, whatever they need, that we can help them and find, find services that they well-earned and well-deserve, um, we're going to make sure that that happens. And as our commander said, our goal is to have that corridor, that corridor from Westerly all the way through East Greenwich and up into New York City. There's all Purple Heart towns, we're well on the way to having that done. And there would be nothing better than to see Route one and Route four as Purple Heart highways. I know my wife and I see that when we travel in, in other, in other states, Purple Heart highways. And it, uh, it always takes our breath away to, to see that. So in recognition of that, um, and to, just to, just to let you know that, how much we think of the town of Narragansett and all of those that fully support us, we have the plaque here for the town, presenting the town of Narragansett as an official Purple Heart town from VFW Post nine-one-six. So, Mr. President? Thank you, sir.
Everybody take a five-minute break, and bring, bring here, thank you. Um, we do have an announcement, uh, the council is going to be having an executive session on December ninth at four-thirty PM regarding collective bargaining. Um, so I wanted to have that, um, on the record for the clerk, um, and then for, for that. And the council will schedule that again, that's December ninth, collective bargaining executive session at four-thirty PM. Is that correct, Terry?
Yes.
All right, great. Um, next, we have our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'll take off number two right now.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number two?
Simmed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item number two is a motion to approve a Class F-one alcoholic beverage license for the Busy Buddies Foundation for their fundraising event to be held on December, on February first, twenty-twenty, at the towers, subject to state and local regulations.
So the organizer is here tonight?
So, if I need to...
I'm sorry, so...
Second.
Discussion, go ahead, Jill.
The organizer is here tonight, she did a lot of work with the VFW, so I thought we'd give her the opportunity to speak about the event.
Welcome, name and address.
Thank you, Rachel Cloud, I live at two-seventy Columbia Street in Peastville, still call it Peastville even though we lost our zip code. Um, I am president and founder of Busy Buddies Foundation, and it is a local nonprofit that supports children to do whatever activity they want, and it's within Washington County. Um, so any kids under the age of eighteen, whether it's athletics, or music, or whatever their interest, we help provide funding. And knowing I was coming here, I kind of looked back at all the, my notes. And in the past five years, we have been able to, um, give out over fifteen thousand dollars' worth of scholarships. So we are a small foundation, but we're very active within our community and are proud of what we've been doing. So this event is our annual roaring twenties, and this year it's actually going to be more exciting because it's twenty-twenty, so you can dress past or present. Um, and it's going to be at the Narragansett Towers on February first from seven to eleven. Um, so I have invitations for all of you, and I hope you can make it. And with the money we raise from this, we try to only do one, um, big event a year because it's, um, a hundred percent volunteer board. So it's our side, sideline, and all our free time, this is what we do.
Well, thank you so much. If you get the invitations at that time, clerk, that'd be wonderful. And, um, we look forward to that event on February first. Um, any, um, comments from the council? Any other comments from the public?
Thank you for having me, thank you.
All right, um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Um, item number eight is a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading the resolution amending the official list of parking regulation restrictions and regulations in the town of Narragansett and coordinates within Narragansett Code of Ordinances to restrict parking on Anna Olivo Court.
Simmed.
Second.
This is a second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item nine is a motion to award the bid for revaluation program from twelve-thirty-one, four, I'm sorry, four, for twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty assessment date to the second lowest bidder, Northeast Revaluation Group LLC, in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars, and to authorize the town manager to sign the contract after review by the town solicitor.
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion, so I'm going to turn it over to the town manager and to the tax, um, assessor regarding, um, the, uh, this bid process and this three-year evaluation, revale process. Go ahead.
Oh, good evening, Mr. President, and that's the...
Good evening, Council.
I think if you want me to give you a brief summary of, of revaluations in general, or...
No, basically, we, just a couple of things, the Northeast Revale, we switched you for Vision appraisal, that's part of the reason why, although they're not the lowest bidder, you know, the, part of the reason we're choosing them is, you know, they're not the lowest bidder, the recommendation for me was for them because they're familiar with our system. We had some frustrations with Vision appraisal in the past, and anything along those lines, I don't think we need to, um, many people are familiar with the three-year process, the revale process, remember? This would start, um, twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty, correct?
Well, it'd be as of twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty, it's going to start in December because it's going to be a measuring list. Uh, every nine years, we do a measuring list, every, every other year. Uh, every other three-year cycle, we just do a, um, reevaluation, there's no measuring list. The process is the same for either one. Uh, hopefully, you've read my summary on it, it kind of summarizes, I tried to be as brief as possible. Um, I've been, I've been through many revales, um, because I've been, I've been in this kind of business for a while. Um, I can say that I've, I spent more time on these three proposals than I've spent on previous ones. Um, I'm encouraged at those three bidders for these. Um, in the past, there's been generally two bidders, so, um, that's good, I think it's good for the town. Um, but ultimately, ultimately, my, my responsibility is to get to the, to this, what I call the finish line. And the finish line is accomplishing things that I feel are important to the town of Narragansett. Um, and that really, for me, it really comes down to value and equity. So, um, and, and so I, I spent considerable amounts of time, uh, speaking with the three bidders, asking them questions, finding out about staff, finding out about timelines. Um, and my recommendation is to stay with an authorized, uh, reevaluation. Um, and the primary reason for that is, um, software, as anyone knows, it's, it's getting a new software system, they, they're very complicated. Um, with revaluations, it's software, and it's also personnel, and the familiarity with the town. Um, there's many issues, um, there are, there are many issues that I've addressed in the last revale, which I came late to here in Narragansett, and the conversion. Um, but there are, there are many issues that I'm, I'm looking to address, and ultimately, that's my goal. Um, and while there were certainly other options in this case, um, I felt with, uh, I felt that with what we are dealing with with software, um, that Northeast would ultimately be the best, uh, would provide the best results, value and equity for the town. Um, so, um, that's pretty much...
Great.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to...
And the other bid, the low bid was Tyler, um, which was up price of twenty thousand less. Um, any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Um, yeah, I'm not a real big fan of Northeast, uh, reeval, re-evaluation group. For instance, if you're buzzing around on there, you see a certain property, you go to print, it doesn't print out the information that's showing on your screen on the computer, pulls out certain information. So I mean, got to a point where I just print the screen instead of going to the print mode and stuff.
Okay.
And it leaves out a lot of the information that Vision appraisal does cover, like, uh, previous owners, several other things. I mean, I, I'm not making a big deal, I'm just making a comment, you know? I'm not going to, you know, die on this hill, but, but I think, uh, pound for pound, I think Vision appraisal is a better system. It's easier to understand for people who have property, they can look it up. And you got three different choices when it comes to maps.
Yep.
The Northeast solution, there's a place to click on maps, but there's no map. So I think a lot of people don't realize that you can click on there and you'll get a map. You click on there, the map comes up, but it doesn't show, so it's kind of confusing. They use these systems all the time, and, um, I just think you get more bang if you bought a Vision appraisal. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Anyone from the public?
Oh, sorry, I have a couple of questions. Um, so I don't use the software that often, I don't really have a need to use it daily, I'm not a realtor. Um, I know we used to use Vision, uh, what was, when did we switch over, was that three years ago?
Yes.
And were you here, sorry, I, I don't know the history, were you?
Well, no, I, I arrived in December of, uh, two thousand seventeen. Um, they had already started the reevaluation, uh, they were in it, they were just pretty much finishing it up. I started, it was as of December that I arrived here. So they were finishing the revale as of that day, and they were also converting the software from, from Vision to Patriot.
And do you, what were the reasons that the staff gave, or at least your understanding, to switch from Vision to Northeast at that time?
Uh, well, Vision, Vision, uh, Vision wrote to town a letter saying that they would, they would have to upgrade their system and it was going to be twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so there, there, that's one reason. Do you, was there an issue with the quality, or the staff, or anything like that? Just, or was it monetary?
Yep.
All right, so, I have actually a question for Jill, if you don't mind, since you're, you're a realtor. Do you have a preference between the two softwares?
They're pretty similar, I, I don't know that, that one is, is so superior than the other, I use them both. It, Patrick's right, one's a little bit easier to use, but if, if you're using them constantly, you know how to use them, yeah.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, that's, um, the, the website is one of the things we've, um, we've put together a couple, um, put together a punch list as to issues to address, so we are going to address those. So thank you for...
Actually, I do have one more, sorry, quick, I don't know if you have the answer to this. Is this the same Tyler Technologies that bid on this that, um, we use for PACE? The PACE program?
I, I believe so, they're, they're a big, they're a big corporation.
Hmm.
Very large corporation, they have a number of different types of software.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And so overall, we, Northeast, um, because of our familiarity, the continuity, that's your recommendation?
Yep.
Anything else, Jim? All right, uh, anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item number, thank you, thank you. Item ten is a motion to approve the town hall security project with Landtel Communications Incorporated, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Or from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. A motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading and ordinance an amendment of chapter seven-three-one of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled Zoning, at section three-point-two, official zoning map, to modify the limitation on uses for the property at seven-oh-seven-Poin Judith Road, Flat Y four, Lot four, Zone BB, and R eighty.
Simmed.
Second.
This is the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twelve is a motion to adopt the proposed twenty-twenty Narragansett beach fees.
Simmed.
Second.
Discussion, so we had a work session on the beach fees, there's a recommendation, um, from our Parks and Recs Department for no changes, I am going to have him come up if there are any questions for, for him from the council, but I think we're pretty well-versed in what we, um, what we, what we, the last couple of years in making, um, strengthening our beach policies. All right, and any questions for the, um, for Steve?
Good evening.
Thank you. Anything you want to say?
Uh, no, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity. Um, as we said in the work session, I think we had a very successful season for two thousand nineteen, and the department and the Rec Advisory Board are moving forward and, and asking to move forward for twenty-twenty with no changes in our fees and our policies. The only thing that we did recommend, and I can put it on an agenda for, uh, December, is that we will make a recommendation to change, uh, weekend and holiday, uh, hours to seven-thirty, to five, uh, to six o'clock with lifeguards on duty, that'll be for weekends and holidays. Fees and policies will stay the same, but we're just going to change our hours for weekends and holidays. Weekdays will be eight-thirty to, um, six o'clock.
All right, thank you, and just if you could stay nearby, if you have any backup for number thirteen as well, that'd be great. Um, any comment from the public, Stanley?
Certainly don't want to criticize the, uh, beach, it's a fantastic program out there, there's no doubt about it. But I did notice the, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, that's kind of a tax bill for the beach, they don't pay taxes, so they give the town some money instead of taxes, I think. And, uh, i-is it been constant over the years? I mean, I, you know, since everybody else's taxes went up, I would assume that the beach taxes, payment in lieu of taxes should also increase along with everyone else as time goes on. Therefore, there should be, uh, uh, a higher payment to the town from the beach fund. And, uh, and of course, that means, I, I think there should be an increase of fees. I mean, there's an increase in taxes, should be an increase of fees. Everybody should, everybody's used to seeing at least cost a little increase in everything they buy everywhere they go. Uh, another thing I noticed here, seniors are free, you know, and Narragansett, I think the seniors are very rich. They don't, they don't need to go there for free, you know? I, I think they, I think they ought to pay their fair share like everyone else, you know? Uh, it's, it's kind of a nice gesture, but, uh, it's, you know, you're trading off, give me something for free, and then some family has to pay more in their taxes for their home. So I, I, I think they, we could have stood a increase in fees there. Uh, we could have had, uh, parking go up, you know, we're always, you know, I just think, I don't know exactly where, but I think the commanders, that they're on twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars, that's, that's terribly cheap to have a commander, you know? Uh, out there, it's a fancy thing out there, uh, for very rich people, I assume, I don't know. But twenty-five hundred dollars to have a, have a place out there is pretty cheap to me, that probably should be about four thousand, you know? And again, you know, these fees go up, and we can increase the, uh, now we can have the expense part, uh, lower our taxes a little bit as we increase that fees. So I'm sorry I missed it, I'm sorry I missed the, the, uh, workshop to bring this up, I just get all the guests. But I think in the future, I would hope that you'd always continue to increase fees as you increase the taxes. If you stop increasing fees, okay, stop increasing our taxes. Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
So, I'd just like to say one thing, Matt.
Yeah?
So Stanley and, and others that at home are here, the beach is an enterprise fund, so there are no tax dollars, Stanley. Nobody's taxes in the town go up or down because there's either not a great attendance of a season or there's a greater attendance. It's an enterprise fund, it runs itself, they've done a great job with it, they've actually had money in an emergency fund, which was never done before. So I, I think it's fantastic that that staff, um, they all work as a team, the advisory board works with them, and they've done unbelievable job, and they do have further projects that they will bring up, and that all comes out of that beach enterprise fund, not a dime of the taxpayer, so we should really be proud of that. Thank you.
And thank you, is there anyone else?
Yeah, a question, Steve, do you mind coming up, I just missed something quickly there. Um, can you just repeat the change to the hours, because I didn't catch that?
Yes, we, uh, we gave some thought from the work, work session, and we're going to, uh, we're going to make a recommendation at the next, uh, December meeting, uh, to change our hours on weekends and holidays and open an hour early in charge from seven-thirty in the morning, instead of eight-thirty, from seven-thirty until, uh, six o'clock at night. So our, our hours will be lifeguards on duty from seven-thirty till six, instead of eight-thirty to six. So we'll be bringing that before, uh, the council in December.
All right, so that'll be a separate vote for this?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Steve, uh, seven-thirty, was it, did it used to open at eight?
We open at eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, so then you're going to, or keep it at eight, you're going to keep it at eight-thirty, or you're going to go with seven-thirty? I, I missed, I missed...
Weekends and holidays.
I heard seven-thirty, so...
Yeah, we're, we're going to bring that before the, the council in December, but it was brought to our attention numerous times during our survey and at the work session, uh, to think about, particularly on weekends is when we have a lot of folks that, uh, park on the seawall and, and half our beach is full before we even open up at eight-thirty. So we, we want to, we're going to try that, we, we talked about it, it happened to be just right after the workshop, we had a Rec Advisory Board, and we talked about that at length, and, uh, we, we're going to bring that before you to discuss and possibly, uh, use it as a pilot program, uh, next year, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, but we're not voting on that tonight.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that back to the advisory, I know that's something that I've heard often from people this summer, saying that... I know that's something that I've heard often from people this summer, saying that it's just jammed up an hour before the beach opens, people wanting to get in for free, taking the parking place, step the seawall away from restaurants and the shops in town. So thank you for bringing that to the board.
If there's anyone else? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 13 is a motion to award the request for proposals for landscape design services, Veterans Memorial Park to Landscape Elements LLC, in the amount of $17,000, $17,012.
Simoed.
Second.
Discussion, I'm going to bring Steve up. This is, we could call either Phase 1B or Phase 2A, right? So the first big thing that was done down at the park was that fourth plat for the most recent war.
Yes.
But now, this is, if you could describe this next piece?
Yes, this has been, thank you. This has been something we've been working on with Major Marikas for several years on this project. If you all know, Veterans Memorial Park, which is a small piece at Veterans Park, which is, is in, first of all, there's no ADA access. We want to take a look at this, we're hiring, we'd like to hire this company to do a master plan, landscaping plan, make it ADA accessible. Right now, it, there is no continuous access to the park, to the rest of Veterans Park. There is no walkways to tour the monuments, and it's, it really needs to be upgraded. So it's something that, this is the first part of that, is to design this and then be able to have a budget to include it in the POC's CIP to move forward for the next year or two, to be able to develop that. So this is a big portion of that, and we actually had this in our CIP that was approved last spring, so this money is used to develop that with our master plan.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Yes.
Do you have a check with the University of Rhode Island Landscape Architecture Program? The Landscape Architecture Program, maybe help out, like mentorship?
Yeah, we can check with them, yes, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Next is a motion to approve hiring one recreation program coordinator of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Simoed.
Second.
This is due to a retirement. Any comments or questions from the council? Any comments or questions from the public? Yes, Stanley?
I want to commend the programs that have been done out there. You've seen Tom Tessitore out there, I've been out there during the events, him and Steve have been out there following through. They've done a fantastic job of bringing some fantastic people out there, and I certainly enjoyed myself, and many people have enjoyed themselves. And it really is, I felt bad that Tom was thinking of retiring, like to hold him over as long as we could, you know? But I do want to give an attaboy, Anthony's done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, we've shared that as well, and Steve and I talked about that before the meeting, so we'll, yeah, so we're going to thank him for his service. Yes?
Karen Chapman with Swanda Street. I think this is an opportunity with the hiring of a new person for the POCs of Recreation, that we include a job description that covers programming for seniors, because right now, they just have Karen Flint doing most of the programming and all the work for the community center with very little help from one POC time custodian. And I think with the growing number of seniors, it would be an opportunity to assist in strengthening our senior programs. We could have someone that was qualified to program for seniors in that job description. Basically, I think Tom Tessitore does a lot of programming for children, but I don't think there's much involvement with the seniors. So I think this is an opportunity to improve the senior program.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 15 is a motion to award the bid for pump station wet well cleaning to the lowest bidder, Inland Boaters Incorporated, for the amount of $30,635.
Simoed.
Second.
Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 16 is a motion to approve the purchase of winter road salt from Champion Salt LLC at $46.70 per ton delivered for the fiscal year 2019-20 winter season per the City of Providence's bid award.
Simoed.
Second.
Discussion, any comments from the council? Alright, so this is for our salt for the roads during the winter season. Any comments, so it's very important, anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 17 is a motion to award the bid for Cecil Trash Receptacle Rubbish Removal for the Public Works Department to the lowest bidder, Tidy Up Incorporated, at their quoted prices of $25,946.30 at a per barrel cost of $3.89 for year one, and $24,693,072 at a per barrel cost of $3.89 for year number two.
Simoed.
Second.
Discussion, these are regarding the trash receptacles that we have at different parts of the, different parts of the town, including the Pier and Galilee. Any comments or questions from the council? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item number 18 is a motion to approve the renewal of the alcohol beverage licenses for the license period of December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020.
Simoed.
Second.
Alright, so discussion, I'm actually going to be doing this as five separate motions. This'll be a little tedious, so I hope everyone has the patience to bear with me on this, because we have different categories of, we have different categories of licenses. So we had our public hearing on these at our last meeting, so the first is, I'm going to be looking for a motion to renew the following Class A alcohol beverage liquor licenses subject to compliance with all state and local regulations. Bond &amp; Spirits Incorporated doing businesses Bond at Liquors at 965 Boston Neck Road, O'Neil's Package Store Incorporated doing businesses O'Neil's Package Store 366 South Pier Road, and Schwab's Wine and Spirits doing businesses Schwab's Wine and Spirits 855 Point Judith Road.
Simoed.
Second.
Alright, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is a motion to renew the Class A alcoholic beverage license subject to compliance with all state and local regulations for Pier Liquors Incorporated doing businesses Pier Liquors 29 Pier Marketplace.
Simoed.
Second.
Alright, so on this one, I'm going to be seeking an amendment for, amendment for the renewal of the license to replace the stipulation which was approved on July 17, 2006, that reads the license shall not be transferable to either a different owner or a different location with the following, the license shall not be transferable to a different location but may be transferred to a different owner.
Simoed.
Second.
Alright, discussion, right, that's an amendment to that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Alright, motion approved four to one. Next item, next group of licenses, is a motion to renew the following Class B vixhuling limited alcohol beverage licenses, subject to compliance with all state and local regulations. On Carries Incorporated doing businesses On Carries 1240 Ocean Road, Calaveras LLC doing businesses Calaveras 83 Narragansett Avenue, JB Coffee Company LLC doing businesses Cool Beans Cafe 18 Kingstown Road, Julio's LLC doing businesses Leo's Pizza 909 Boston Neck Road, Casey Montanari doing businesses The Bike Shop Cafe 148 Boone Street.
Simoed.
Second.
Discussion. Terry, one thing is, if I, if I want to make sure that the license, the type of license that I'm getting correct, and I'm reading it straight from each of these, I know that we're kind of going down the tier, so feel free to interrupt me.
That's awesome.
Alright, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I said aye.
Okay, alright, sorry. Motion approved five to zero. Item number, I'm sorry, the next item is motion to renew, looking for a motion to renew the following Class B tavern alcoholic beverage licenses, subject to compliance with all state and local regulations. Narragansett Recreation LLC doing businesses Aqua Blue Hotel 1 Beach Street, IMP Beverage Services LLC doing businesses Ocean Rose Inn and Turtle Soup 113 Ocean Road, and The Break LLC doing businesses The Break Hotel and Chair 5 1208 Ocean Road.
Simoed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Next group is a motion to renew the following Class B vixhuling alcoholic beverage licenses, subject to compliance with all state and local regulations. Diamond Arturo Corporation doing businesses Arturo Joe's at 140 Point Judith Road, Hammerhead Grill Incorporated doing businesses Bond View Inn 1230 Ocean Road, Van Kelp Peg 1112 LLC doing businesses Buster Crabs, Burger Shack 265 Great Island Road, Catarina's Italian Restaurant Incorporated doing businesses Catarina's Italian Village 945 Boston Neck Road, Champlin Seafood Deck Incorporated doing businesses Champlin Seafood Deck 256 Great Island Road, South Winds Corporation doing businesses Coast Guard House 40 Ocean Road, Georges Galilee Restaurant Incorporated doing businesses Georges of Galilee 250 Sand Hill Cove Road, Mariner Grill Incorporated doing businesses Mariner Grill 140 Point Judith Road, New Dragon Incorporated doing businesses New Dragon 80 Point Judith Road, GFL Incorporated doing businesses Poncho O'Malley's 140 Point Judith Road, Pelley's Properties LLC doing businesses Pelley's Place 909 Boston Neck Road, SAGS Enterprises LLC doing businesses PJ's Pub 135 Boone Street, Portside Restaurant Incorporated doing businesses Portside Restaurant 321 Great Island Road, Proof Properties LLC doing businesses Proof 140 Point Judith Road, Spain of Narragansett Incorporated doing business as Spain Restaurant 1144 Ocean Road, Tybes LLC doing businesses Tybes 21 Pier Marketplace, TRG 2 Incorporated DBATs Narragansett 91 Point Judith Road, Trio LLC doing businesses Trio 15 Kingstown Road, Twin Willows LLC doing businesses Twin Willows 865 Boston Neck Road, WT Galilee Corporation doing businesses Captain Foggy's Fish House 290 294 Great Island Road.
Simoed.
Second.
Alright, any discussion on those? I didn't realize some of those served alcohol. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. And then a motion to renew the following Class D Club alcoholic beverage licenses, subject to compliance with all state and local regulations. Bonner Shores Beach Club Association doing businesses Bonner Shores Beach Club 175 Bonner Point Road, GBC Association doing businesses Galilee Beach Club 220 Sand Hill Cove Road, Metatuxent Improvement Association doing businesses Metatuxent Yacht Club 30 South River Drive, Petticoats Get Lake Shores Improvement Association doing businesses Petticoats Get Lake Shores Improvement Association 50 Woods Road, Point Judith Country Club doing businesses Point Judith Country Club 150 Windermere Road, and Dunes Corporation doing business as The Dunes Club 137 Boston Neck Road.
Simoed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your patience on that. Alright. Item 19, I'm going to have to, could you read me the motion? I know it's revised, Terry.
The recommendation is that the town council president appoint one individual to the Historic District Commission.
Alright, so it's an appointment by the president to one individual to the Historic District Commission. So the Historic District Commission has a unique feature in which the president of the council actually makes the appointment, not the council itself. So I'm going to be appointing Karen Cattunio to the Historic District Commission. Next item is item number 20, a motion to schedule the annual town council and school committee work session on fiscal year 2021 school budget as required by RIGL general law 16-2-21.
Simoed.
Second.
So there are two dates for this, that possibility, so I want to, I don't know what people on the council, what an option is. December 16, 2019 at 6:30 PM, that would be prior to a regular meeting. And then we have on December 9 at 5:30 PM. So basically, I'm just going to ask the council members if they have a preference between the two.
16th.
16th.
16th. Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so it's going to be a motion to, so we're going to be scheduling this for December 16 at 6:30 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item number 21 is a motion to appoint Public Works Deputy Director Steven Daniel as acting Public Works Director until further notice.
Simoed.
Second.
Jim? So this'll be, we'll have Steve Daniel for the next couple of months in that role. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item 22 is a motion to cancel the town council meeting scheduled for Monday, December 2nd, 2019.
Simoed.
Second.
Discussion. This item comes, actually comes from May. We typically cancel our second meeting in December to give everyone a break over Christmas. But this year, our new town manager is not going to be here for the first meeting, so we spoke, and I think it's in the best interest to have him here at the meetings, at least in this early part of his tenure. And so we'll be canceling the first meeting in December, which will be December 2nd, if this passes, instead of the second one. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
I don't see why not. Yes.
Motion approved four to one. Right, our next section of the meeting is our open forum of public comments. People are coming to the podium for matters that are of concern to the town. I guess that people go, try to keep their comments to three minutes. Just name and address.
Thank you. Let me go first. Rachel Cloud, Eastdale. I wanted to thank you very much for announcing the Veterans Day breakfast at the last meeting. My friend Shelley Cole and I organize the Veterans Day breakfast and a Memorial Day breakfast each year, and have since 2013. So we certainly appreciate your support. I often see many of you at the breakfast, and thank you for that. This year, we raised just, oh, we raised $420 to give to our local VFW post with pledges to bring it to 500. I pause because what we raise is more the feeling in the community, which is why we do it. We were able to give 22 veterans a free breakfast, which is what it's all about, and get the community support there, out there in the morning, to see what it's all about. We, this year, we did donate to the VFW post, which we have done in the past. We also sometimes will give to another military charity, but it's always a great day and well-received. So thank you for supporting it and for being part of it, and hope to see you at Memorial Day breakfast.
Well, thank you for all the work that you do on the veterans, and just know you're in our next door town, but you've done so much as somebody in the community, and I want to just make sure that people understand your volunteer efforts, and there's people like you who keep things going, make things nice for all of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, is there anyone else? Stanley?
I think I mentioned this before, but I think we need to think more about it as time goes on. The Rhode Island General Treasurer, Seth Magazini, released this is debt affordability study, providing comprehensive information on debt. And it said, in Narragansett, the town comes dangerously close to meeting the recommended limits for governmental debt services, according to this public finance, public finance management board. And that board is there to provide a useful guide that policymakers in Rhode Island can refer to when making decisions. So that's like, I guess like going to the bank, you know, going to get approved for debt. I guess there's no approval rating for debt in public in a tax situation, but it seems like at least we have a recommendation that we're probably close to a maximum allowable Therefore, I wanted you to stay fast and... Therefore, uh, I wanted you to steadfast in not taking on more debt. And of course, that goes onto the library debt. Uh, I was hoping that, uh, once the library debt situation, they understand that you don't have the money technically, you don't have the ability for, let's say fiscal responsibility says that you don't go out there and take on any more debt. Uh, so now the library, I was hoping would look for alternative financial ways of getting the money to carry on the project. And, uh, I was so happy to see Terrence Murray come up with that idea on, uh, on getting volunteer money. You know, I was hoping that after he did it, maybe five or ten others would do it, and, uh, understanding that government can't do it. You can't go after somebody that doesn't have the money. So you find somebody who does have the money to step forward and donate. Now, when you find out that you, if you find out that you've got ten million dollars, now you can, now you can go find out what kind of building you own. But if you only got five million dollars, you know, how long do you wanna go out there and get, get, find the money? But it's obvious that the government here, according to professional people, should not be taking on debt. So I, I want you to steadfast in that decision to minimize the debt issue and maximize the idea of looking for volunteer money out there in this town. I'm sure there's many more like Terrence that would come forward even before final design. The final design comes after we know how much money we got. We can't have a final design if we don't know how much money we got.
Thank you, Stan.
Oh, jeez. I'm, I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Dave Apodiden, Woodward, Woodward Road. Um, I was gonna speak earlier during the parking comment, but I figured I'd speak now. Um, I just wanna let you know there's a couple of issues that are going on down Point Judith that were not addressed earlier. Uh, one of the things, I, many of you know that I own landscaping business, and I do do a lot of business down in that area. Some of the issues stem from people placing structures close to the road, whether it be fencing, walls, trees, plants. So when you go to park along the road, especially if you have my landscaping truck and trailer, I can't park all the way over to the side of the road, because you can't get out of the truck, because you can't open the door, because it runs into a fence, runs into a wall, runs into some trees and bushes. There's actually a road that runs between, I believe, Ocean Road and Caleb, where one of my customers built himself a, uh, you know, when he lives there, he sold the house. He, uh, put a railroad type wall blocking that road that runs parallel in between those two roads, so you can't drive through. So I think the town really needs to look at not only the parking issue down there, but some of the structures that have been placed on those roads that make it very difficult to park anywhere along that. Um, second of all, many of you know that I feel as a resident, any resident in town should be able to park on any residential street in this town if your car's registered in Narragansett. If you, and I have a teenage son, he's friends with, I take surfing down in that area. If you're going to create spots down in that area, I believe that they should be for the residents of this town, and they should get first dibs on those spots. And I do have friends that live in S T and East Branch that surf. I can easily pick them up at the bar view and drive my truck or car down to a resident only parking on some of those side streets over there and allow, and allow me to park closer to those public access points. I personally don't surf, but my son does and his friends, and I like to be close by when they're surfing, when they surf, because just in case something happens, I need to be able to pull them out of water and get out and get them out of there. So what, dropping them off at one of those points and then going back and parking at the bar view and walking back over there is not really a viable option to me. I feel it'd be better for many parents in this community. It wouldn't be a safety issue for the parents of this town if they could park closer to the areas where the kids surf. And I think that'd be a, a kind of an easy compromise and alleviate some of the pressure on the small number of spots you may be able to create in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Smith?
David Smith, twenty-fourth Castle Road in Narragansett. Narragansett Town Council on November sixth held a second of two workshops on the alternate route proposed by Rhode Island Department of Transportation in its readiness review of Phase Four B of the South County bike path. During that session, the council members considered rejecting the plan and ending the South County bike path at Narragansett Community Center. This decision would result in the loss of three million dollars in reimbursement for design and construction of the final three-quarter mile segment of the bike path, Phase Four B, to the beach. Now, there was some discussion that the three million dollars could be used for design permitting of the path through Canachia Farm, if funds from other sources could be used to cover construction. I believe that the Department of Transportation will not reimburse the town for design and permitting of the path through Canachia Farm, as Riteout has already determined that such a path cannot be permitted because of species of concern, wetlands and sea level rocks. I wish it were not so. This decision to not complete the bike path between the community center and the beach leaves in place serious problems for pedestrians, bicyclists, and owners. The Town Council should inform Riteout that it will accept three million dollars, but with the first expenditure being hiring a traffic engineer to do a comprehensive traffic safety plan in Central Narragansett, a plan that takes into account the concerns of the residents of Narragansett Avenue, Wanda Street, Otto Street, and Strathmore, and other stakeholders. A plan that takes into account the current marked bugger on Monford Road, Kingstown Road, Narragansett Avenue. A plan that takes into account multiple destinations for bicyclists and pedestrians, not just Narragansett Beach, uh, Pier Marketplace, Boone Street, parks. And finally, a plan that takes into account connections with the South County bike path, Phase Four A, the community center, the bike route on Boston Neck Road, and the safe routes to school multi-use path by the Pier Middle School in Narragansett, High School. Such a roadway safety assessment would certainly lead to a better design than the alternative presented by Riteout. Or it may show that the path through Canachia Farm is the only safe route, and therefore able to pass those permitting hurdles. So I urge you to engage with the Department of Transportation and not to say no to the three million dollars, and to seek reimbursement for a traffic safety plan. And let not, let's not let serious safety problems fester. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mrs. Smith?
Good evening, everyone. Rosemary Smith, twenty-fourth Castle Road, Narragansett. Uh, today, David, the previous speaker, and I attended the ribbon cutting for the URI bike path connected to the South County bike path. It was really a festive event. The four main speakers, URI President Dr. Dooley, Director of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, Janet Coy, a URI faculty representative, and a vivacious president of the Student Senate, spoke of the beauty of the bike path through the campus, to the side of Peckham Farm, and to the South County bike path, that they felt terminated at the Narragansett Town Beach. They said it all four times, each speaker, so I just say that the people will be coming to use our bike path very soon, as this is now opening, and the Town Four A PAC will be opening soon, too. In addition to the estimated thirty thousand bicycle trips a year at Monford Road, which was determined by the Rhode Island Department of Planning in two thousand seventeen, there will be additional bicyclists and pedestrians. Director Coy asked Dave and I to speak, uh, asked to speak to Dave and I about Phase Four A, the bike path around the elementary school, which is funded by the DEM's Green Economy Bond and is almost completed. She is looking forward to the ribbon cutting ceremony for Phase Four A in Narragansett. Secondly, Director Coy said that Narragansett should keep its options open and not reject the three million dollar DOT reimbursement. She concurred with us that hiring a traffic engineer to develop a road safety assessment for the center of Narragansett makes sense as it is the intersection of the South County bike path, the safe routes to school, and the Boston Neck Road bike route. From our perspective, the Town Council's decision not to accept a three million dollar reimbursement is not going to, um, stop the influx, influx of bicyclists and pedestrians. The reimbursement can be used to provide safe pathways to Narragansett Beach and other destinations. It is a three million dollar reimbursement that the town cannot afford to refuse, and we need to make the big step forward. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Karen?
Karen Chapshaw, Wanda Street. I missed the, uh, I had a conflict, so I couldn't come to the last discussion. We've had many, many, many discussions about the use of the bike path coming through Canachia Farms. And in the report, it was stated that, um, Narragansett wasn't ready to accept the money, and that's why they didn't, they cut the money. And I can't understand why we had spent so much time trying to bring the bike path through a safe, rustic, pretty area, which is the area behind Canachia Farms' housing development. And that would make it a very enjoyable place to play and to walk and to bike ride. And I can't for the life of me figure out why this has been stalled and the can has been kicked down the road. And then they come up with this preposterous plan to bring it down Wanda Street. I mean, there have been bike accidents right at the corner of Strathmore and Kingstown. Um, friend of my son's was hit by a car coming home from school when he was in elementary school. And there, um, and now with the increased traffic from Canachia Farms' development, using Wanda and Offmire as a shortcut to the beach, I think they're really missing the point of just bringing the bike path to the beach by any, any way, shape, or form. I was on a bike pedestrian committee, and the main reason I joined that committee was for the safety of pedestrians and bikers in the town, 'cause we certainly have an increased number of bikers. But I don't understand why they're not bringing it through Canachia Farms, which would be much more pretty and rustic, um, tour and journey, rather than, I think all the neighbors are very upset that we even consider bringing it down Wanda Street, 'cause we realize how dangerous that can be. And it really is dangerous with all the driveways coming out on Wanda Street and cars buzzing up and down, and you can't always see it because it's erratic, you know, when there's holidays or summer traffic. Plus, when the traffic, the bike traffic entered, entered, empties out onto the lower part of Narragansett Avenue, which is right by Lake Canachia, um, down, down the bottom of the street, there's no place for the bikes to go. They've made no effort to absolutely put a wooden path down to prohibit parking along that, that, those streets. And I can't understand it why they won't, at least won't say you can't park there, 'cause there's parking on both sides, and rescue vehicles can't even get through that street when there's traffic coming on both sides and this car's parked on each side. And where are the bikers supposed to go in that situation? It's very dangerous. And I would hope, rather than dailing, oh, we're gonna miss the three million dollars, well, think of something we can do constructively with the three million dollars down by Canachia Farms and use it constructively towards that.
Thank you. Anyone else? A motion to retire to executive session of the Town Council in accordance with Rhode Island General Law's forty-two dash forty-six dash four, and forty-two dash forty-six dash five subsection A, personnel, discussion of compensation for full-time municipal employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, in accordance with Rhode Island General Law's forty-two dash forty-six dash five subsection A one. Is there a motion?
Simmood.
Second.
Alright, roll call.
Richard Lee, aye.
Jill Lunn, aye.
Matt Manix, aye.
Magic Murray, aye.
Jesse Pugh, aye.
Alright, motion approved, five to zero. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Have a nice